Apologies to everyone. Thank you for attending the City of West Miami Planning and Zoning Board regularly scheduled meeting of Wednesday, February 28th, 2024. My name is Gustavo Ceballos and I am joined by, pardon me, Eugenio Gonzalez.
Yes.
Alvaro Laureido and Diana Rio.
Yes.
We'll go ahead and get started. Can we have a pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic which stands in the creation of what they call our individual and representative justice.
We already did the roll call. Approval of minutes. Do we have any comments, edits, or can I get a motion?
I make a motion to approve the minutes.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All of them in favor, say aye.
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 Old Business, signed permit application. Staff, do you want to read that into the record?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, let me sort the...
Okay, thank you.
All that will testify would appreciate your right hand and repeat please to me. I do solemn and sorry to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Okay, so Old Business, item 4A. This is a signed permit application for new monument sign on existing shopping center. Property address 1200 Southwest 57th Avenue, West Miami, Florida 33144. The applicant requests a new monument sign for the shopping center at 1200 Southwest 57th Avenue for the businesses between 1200 and 1252 Southwest 57th Avenue. The monument sign will house the business name of the six businesses renting at the shopping center. The monument sign will have a height of 10 feet where 30 feet is allowed by ordinance. In addition, the monument sign will have a width of 6 feet totaling 60 square feet where 69 square feet is allowed for building frontage. The monument sign will be placed at the corner of Southwest 57th Avenue and Southwest 13th Street. It will have a setback of 10 feet at the front and side of the property where a minimum of 5 feet is required for ordinance zoning section 22 of zoning ordinance 282 referencing signed ordinance 2013-08 section 2210 ACNE. The applicant submitted a new plan regarding the safe site triangle that was suggested by administration from the last planning and zoning meeting.
The applicant here? Would you like to come up? Do you have anything to present, or you're good with staff's presentation?
Well, actually, I'm okay with the presentation.
Could you speak into the microphone, please?
Sorry. I'm sorry. Yes, I am okay with the presentation that we have. I just brought the actual owner, that he wanted to put a little bit more input on why he wants to put that sign here.
Good evening. Hi. Yeah, I'm part owner of 1200 Southwest 57th Avenue. It's been in my family for over 30 years and I don't know if anybody's familiar with it, but we renovated it in 2020 and, you know, we've just had some issues with visibility for the tenants. They've, you know, it's been a problem for probably the last two years. Everyone's always said, you know, is there any way that we could put a sign because there's a restaurant there that we have that has one sign on one corner of the property. I don't know if you're familiar with Ziro's Pizza place? Okay, certo, certo. So, yeah, everybody's been asking, you know, can you put a sign? Can you put a sign? Because, you know, people are driving by at 35, 40 miles an hour sometimes and just the visibility, I think it would really help and aesthetically wise, I think it would look nice, you know, it'd be a nice touch to the building as well. But mostly for my tenants to, you know, it would help them bring more business to the shopping center.
Do you guys have a photo or an image of the existing sign on the other corner?
I don't. I might have it on my phone. I do have a picture of it on my phone. If you...
That would be a problem. I mean, just go ahead.
If you'd like, you can email us the photo so we can make it part of the record.
Yes, that would be a lot, but sorry. Just go ahead and email the photo.
I mean, if you want to show it to us and then just make sure it gets emailed so there's a part of our record? And is that something that that particular tenant is entitled to and...
He's entitled, at least that sign's been there for 20 years.
And there's no way to consolidate all this additional signage onto that one time?
We asked and the city didn't approve to make it a bigger sign so we could put more names on it.
Got it.
I mean, we tried, but...
Okay. Anyone have any questions, comments for the applicant or city?
I believe there was a question last time in regards of the actual names on the signage. It was written somewhere that it will be like a uniform type of coloring. So, let's say, whatever, there's a nail place that has red nails or whatever. This is just going to be the name, not like the logo or anything else, just the name.
Just, just the name, just the names.
So, it'll, right, it'll look like a directory, but with...
I'm very finicky about those things. I make everything uniform. I'm, you know, yeah. It would be very uniform.
Okay.
Any other comments or questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Thus being the case, I would make a motion to accept it as presented to us this time.
I second the motion.
Okay. Can we get a roll call?
Okay. Board member Laureido, how do you vote?
Yes.
Board member Rio?
Yes.
Board member Gonzalez?
Yes.
And chairman Ceballos?
Yes.
Okay, item passes for zero.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next.
Okay, next item, Old Business 4B. This is for the special use permit for planned development for the property address 2121, 2123 Southwest 66th Avenue. Applicant requests a special use permit for the renovation of the property located at 2121, 2123 Southwest 66th Avenue, West Miami, Florida 33... Can you hear me now? Okay. This is for a special use permit for planned development for 2121, 2123 Southwest 66th Avenue, West Miami, Florida. Applicant requests a special use permit for the renovation of the property located at 2121, 2123 Southwest 66th Avenue in West Miami, Florida 33155, providing for a two-story construction of a duplex resident. The property is zoned for R2 multifamily duplex special use permit index number 2024-001, zoning ordinance 282, section 2B.1 and section 4.17. Applicant has submitted revised drawings and the owner will be in attendance. Okay, they're here. And for the record, the big plans that are in your packets is the revised drawings.
My apologies if you stated it. What was the reason for the referral? I think we needed additional information. Is that correct?
An attorney was required to be present because the property was owned by a corporation.
Understood.
The city attorney had made a recommendation that we have an attorney and there was also a recommendation from the board to show how parking would be adequately addressed on the lot.
Would you like to make a presentation?
Yes, I would. Thank you. Good evening, board members. My name is Nicholas Vicente. I'm an attorney and I have the pleasure of representing Mrs. Santana, who's the owner and with us in attendance here today with respect to this property. The property is located at 2121 Southwest 66th Avenue and 2123 Southwest 66th Avenue. We're requesting here today a special use permit that would allow for the second floor of a new duplex construction. The property is currently zoned for R2 zoning, so the prospective use of the property is within its current zoning regulations and rules that the proposed plan meets all setback requirements and it also allows for 50% green space upon the lot, which exceeds a 35% green space minimum for such construction. The total lot coverage is 30%, which is also less than the maximum of 35% of what is typically allowed with such a construction. Generally speaking, the proposed design is the most efficient use of the property to create the duplex that the owner wishes to build. We're additionally requesting a variance. That variance is to exceed the maximum floor area ratio that's currently allowed. We ask to exceed that by 730 square foot and it's solely and directly the result of the extra living space created by the addition of the second floor. This is an appropriate design for an R2 zoning property and is within the bounds and typical approvals that have been granted by the City of West Miami for similar properties in the past. This will result in additional tax revenue based upon the new construction for the City of West Miami. I believe revised plans have been submitted that adequately addressed the prior concerns of the board with respect to the parking. Each duplex will have two direct on parking spaces allocated to each of the duplex sites. And I believe that the board also requested the plans reflect more detailed elevations and drawings with respect to the configuration, the final look of the buildings themselves. So, we ask that the board please consider the request for the special use permit and for the variance consistent with what's been submitted, consistent with what the plans have been submitted, and consistent with what the City of West Miami has approved in the past.
You may have any questions or comments?
Yeah, I have a question. The 730 square feet, is it per unit or...
It's total. It would be split equally between the two units. So, it's for the total footprint of the duplex.
Okay, so then the, this will be located on the second floor only? So...
It's...
The additional square footage is on the second floor. You're meeting every other requirement on the ground floor.
Exactly right. This is for new construction and it will be, the additional square footage is primarily used all the usage of the second floor. Exactly.
Okay, but if you added 730 square feet on the ground floor, you would still meet, would you be exceeding the, I guess it's a question for staff. Would you be exceeding...
Let me, let me explain. We have a little quirk in our zoning code where floor area ratio, historically, our zoning code only allowed for one-story houses. So, our floor area ratio just contemplated everything always being a one-story house. The fact that he's going to two stories, the first story of this, of what they're proposing in terms of their duplex is less than what's allowed in the code. However, since they're going to a second story and basically building up, they're surpassing it. So, if our code matched what is being allowed, which is two stories, the floor area ratio would be a higher number. This is just a quirk in our zoning code.
So, essentially, they could take that second floor and put it down on the ground floor and then meet, that would...
They'd still, well, if they put the complete second story on the ground floor, they would not meet floor area ratio. They would...
They would exceed the...
They would exceed it correctly, but that's because our zoning code contemplated only one-story units. If this, if you were to take those 730 square feet and put it on the bottom, they would probably have setback problems as well.
Great.
Because they would extend the unit out.
Out, yeah, but in the back, they have a lot. They have...
They have a lot. So, in reality, their footprint, which is really the way it should be, their footprint is less than what a one-story equivalent would be.
Exactly.
Any budding property immediately to what I'm assuming is the west is a building? Is that correct?
Yes, to the west is a multifamily building.
And there's no request for variances for setbacks? I think you already addressed that. All the setbacks are being met?
The setback, the current setback rules and regulations are being met by the proposed plans.
Okay.
Okay.
Any other comments or questions? If there are none, I will entertain a motion. If we have no motion, do we have any other comments, questions?
I make a motion to approve.
Okay. Do we have a second?
I second that motion.
We get a roll call?
Yeah.
Okay. Board member Rio, how do you vote?
Yes.
Yes.
Board, board member Rio, how do you vote?
Yes.
Board member Laureido?
Yes.
Board member Gonzalez?
Yes.
And chairman Ceballos?
Yes.
Okay, item passes for zero.
Thank you. Your time.
Next item, item 5C. I'm going to read this into the record. Variance application for Jason Tan Investments, Inc. Property address 2121, 2123 Southwest 66th Avenue, West Miami, Florida 33155. Applicant is requesting a variance to the maximum floor area for the principal building. The maximum floor area for principal building on this 8,400 square foot lot is 3,590 square feet per zoning ordinance 99-01, section 4.14. And the applicant is requesting 730 square feet of additional living space for the property located at 2121, 2123 Southwest 66th Avenue. The variance requested provides for an increase total from 3,590 square feet to 4,320 square feet combined for both units to accommodate two townhomes. This would leave each unit with 2,160 square feet. The property is zoned for R2 multifamily duplex. Variance index number 2024-001, zoning ordinance 282 and 99-01 amended section 4.14.
The applicant here?
This is the same...
Just a second motion?
It's a second motion for the same one. For the record, I would suggest that we adopt everything that was said in the first hearing and bring it forth to this one.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
I make a motion to approve. And I second that motion.
Okay, can we get a roll call?
Okay. Board member Rio, how do you vote?
Yes.
Board member Laureido?
Yes.
Board member Gonzalez?
Yes.
And chairman Ceballos?
Yes.
Item passes for zero. Next item, new business 5A. This is signed permit application for existing business. Property address 900 Southwest 57th Avenue, West Miami, Florida 33144. Applicant requests a signed permit for the existing business replacing one illuminated monument sign and two illuminated wall signs. One is on the east elevation, one on the south elevation to the property. Zoning section 22.0 of zoning ordinance 282, reference ordinance 2013-08, section 22-10 and 22-12. Just a note here, the applicant also requested for the replacement of four directional signs on the property, which require approval only by city administration according to our ordinance and it's currently in building review.
So, we don't review those?
Correct.
Okay. Is there an applicant here?
Yes. Good evening. Mercy, could you also show the wall signs too? Thank you. Good evening. I'm Mark Brinchley. I'm from Claremont, Florida, representing the bank as well as the sign company. If you may have noticed, Wells Fargo is rebranding all of their signs in the nation, changing from yellow channel letters with a red outline to red letters that go on the, either a neutral background, if it goes on a red background, they are changing from yellow to red letters if it's on a red background, like the sign, like the freestanding sign is. So, these two wall signs are smaller than the ones that are existing. You see the lower left-hand corner? It's not a very good picture, but this shows the current yellow channel letters. And then the next one, Mercy, please. So, this is a show, blow up of it. And this is the one facing north, north, north to 56...
That's, that's the south side of the, of the bank.
So, it's on the, on the drive-through fascia. So, again, it's a rebranding of all signs. As you may know, Wells Fargo has purchased several banks in the, in Florida, and so they're, they're making all of the signage consistent, even though the banks, the structures, the banks are different eclectic design because they were built oftentimes 30, 30, 40 years ago by a different bank. Any questions?
So, you're not adding any new signs? All you're doing is replacing existing signage?
That is correct.
And am I reading all these calculations wrong that they currently are not in compliance? Southeast corner property measuring 56 square feet where 50 square feet is allowed? And 24 square feet measured for 23.184 square feet is allowed? Is that correct? I'm just trying to understand if this is a legal nonconformity that we're maintaining? Because if it is not a legal nonconformity, then my recommendation would be to reduce the size so that they are conforming.
It, it is smaller than the ordinance allows in all cases.
In all cases?
Yes.
Okay, so then this may be mistaken? I'm just reading off of the city staff provided.
Uh huh.
And it states that first sign E01 measures 56.945 square feet where 50 is allowed.
So, you're talking about the freestanding sign?
I believe so.
That would be the monument sign.
Yeah.
The monument sign. So, the monument sign is slightly larger than it's allowed to be. And we don't know when that was approved or it was... And the other one also, according to this, sign E03 is about 0.82 of a square foot, too big?
From page, from page four of their drawings, it seems that the monument sign has gone from a horizontal square footage and it has been reduced as the applicant says. The only issue is instead of being horizontal, it's now vertical, slimmer but taller.
But in totality, does it, is it meet our current code?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
It's 30, that monument sign, the one that's there now is 36 square feet.
Okay. I just want to make sure if we're approving the sign change that if we have to approve a variance, is also something we have to consider?
No, no variance is required. These are conforming signs.
Perfect. Any other comments, questions?
I do have comments. I don't see any raceway. Talking about the other signage, 3E02 and E03, there should not be, they should not be mounted on a raceway and also no electrical switches should be visible from the street. Is there a site plan on this packet that shows the location of the vertical monument sign? Just making sure that it meets the triangle?
For the, for the wall-mounted sign that Wells Fargo, it does show the electrical disconnect on the bottom of the O on their, on their drawings.
Right, I do see that one. Same thing for the other one, for the other wall-mounted one. But I don't see a raceway. So, that was my, my question was, or my comment was that I, I would prefer not to see a raceway or the electrical disconnect on the wall. If it could be put behind the, behind the wall, behind the parapet, somewhere where it's not visible from, from the street.
If the applicant's amicable to that, we can make a note on the approval to put the electrical disconnect and ensure that it's hidden behind the parapet.
And I apologize, but I don't see a site plan on here that shows me that it meets the, the triangle of visibility.
Page three?
There was no site plan submitted with the applicant. Perhaps you may want to...
This is here?
This is here?
But it doesn't show, it, it, it doesn't show the safe side triangle or how far off it is from the street.
Then we, we would accept a stipulation that, uh, when it comes for permitting, that it, that it meets the, uh, uh, triangle. Because there is, there's parking behind it, so if it doesn't, it, they could move the sign back, uh, the requisite feet to achieve the, uh, the visibility triangle.
I don't even see that one that you put, can you put it up?
Sure. Page three, you don't have this one? Shall I show them or what?
Thank you. Oh, I don't have this at all. Okay, so this is the one that I was asking, okay.
You have to disclose, uh, on the record what is it that you're going to show in the panel, okay, for the record, okay?
Freestanding sign.
You have to go onto the mic and, um, say something.
Yeah. But just to confirm, I think you already addressed it, none of these signs are new, these are all existing signs. And this sign is being made thinner and taller, so in terms of visibility, it should be less obtrusive than the current sign in theory.
Well, but I don't know where they're locating it, so that's why.
You want to put in the record what is, uh, that you showed the panel?
So I showed the site plan showing the location of E O one, which is the freestanding sign. And I'd be glad to email this to, uh, Ms. Mercy, so it's in the record.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions or comments for the applicant or city staff? If there are none, I will entertain a motion. This is a public hearing item, are there any item, any parties that want to speak? Nope?
And I would make a motion to approve the signage with the additional, um, requirements of no raceways, no electrical disconnect switch to be visible from the street, and that permitting that the site, that there's a site plan that clearly shows that the vertical sign, um, meets the, the triangle of visibility at that corner.
Do we have a second?
A second, hold on.
Okay, can we get a roll call?
Okay, board member Lauredo Harivo?
Yes.
Uh, board member Gonzalez?
Yes.
Board member Rio?
Yes.
And chairman Ceballos?
Yes.
Item passes four zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next item.
Next item, five B, variance application for Christopher Sierra. Six, uh, property address is six zero three six Southwest thirteen Terrace, West Miami, Florida, three three one four four. Applicant requests a variance for an addition of a home office measuring a hundred point seven square feet and on the front elevation of the property, having a front setback of twenty-two point one feet where twenty-five feet is what, is what is allowed by ordinance. The property is a normal-shaped lot and the lot is six thousand six hundred square feet with a standard yard. Variance index number twenty twenty-four dash zero zero five, zoning ordinance twenty-two, section four point one five.
Sir?
Good evening.
Good evening. Would you like to make a presentation or are you good with staff's?
I'm good with staff's presentations, just, uh, to add to it. Currently, um, I do, uh, I do a lot of work from home. And, uh, right now my desk is set up in my, uh, master bedroom. And it's not the most comfortable, but it, you know, it's, it is what it is. So, uh, part of what we're doing is moving the kitchen out of the way, uh, pulling it out into the garage. We're converting the garage and making it a living space. And, uh, one of the big things we really wanted to do was add an additional room that would allow me a place to work more comfortably. So, and then to make it a feasible-sized room, we're requesting just the two feet eleven inches from what the normal setback would be, which is twenty-five feet.
Public hearing, right?
Yep. So right now, the, what is shown here as your pantry, uh, wall, I guess the north wall.
Mm-hmm.
That is your current exterior wall? Or no?
Hold on, let me consult with the boss. This is my wife, Christina Sierra.
Hi.
You have to identify yourself for the record.
Hi, I'm Christina Sierra. The pantry wall is, um, three feet behind, so where our front door is, the garage is flush with the front door right now.
Ah, okay.
So right now that whole space is currently our garage.
Okay.
So this, the wall that they're referring to is a new wall you're going to be building?
Yeah.
Yeah. Because currently, where, like she said, right where the front door is, to the right of it is, uh, the garage door. So that would be brought out. The, within the setback is, I think, eight eleven, and so then we're requesting an additional two eleven, which would bring the overall size of the room to about eleven by twelve.
The area in red on the plan that's on the screen right now is the area that they're adding. Um, they're coming, they're, they're act- they're actually converting their garage into a kitchen and a pantry area and then pulling out, a- adding an additional nine feet to the structure that will, um, encroach on the setback by, by approximately three feet.
Right.
Two feet eleven inches.
My architect didn't like rounding, so.
I know how architects are, I'm one, so I would...
Well, it, it, it kind of is, uh, it, it is intentional because it, it essentially almost brings it up to where, because it's not perfectly accurate, but there are stairs there, so it'll essentially meet with the already existing porch stairs.
So in reality, what they're adding is a hundred feet, they do not exceed FAR requirements according to the staff. So what, really this is a wa- it's a waiver of the setback that's required from twenty-five feet down to twenty-two feet one inches.
Any comments or questions for the applicant or staff? Anybody in the audience that would like to speak in favor or against? Nope?
All right, I'd like to make a motion to approve the plans as shown. Oh, the variance as requested.
I would second that one.
Okay.
Okay, board member Gonzalez Harivo?
Yes.
Uh, board member Rio?
Yes.
Board member Lauredo?
Yes.
And chairman Ceballos?
Yes.
Okay, item passes four zero.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, guys, I appreciate it. Thank you, Mercy.
Okay, next item, item five C. Uh, this is also combined with item five D for the record. Uh, the first item, item five C, variance application for Luis Bouillon for covered terrace with seven feet eleven in setback, property address sixty-two oh one Southwest fourteen Street, West Miami, Florida, three three one four four. Applicant requests a variance to build a covered terrace with columns over an existing concrete slab in line with a non-conforming detached structure having seven point eleven feet in the rear setback where fifteen feet is required by zoning ordinance twenty-two. The property is a normal-shaped corner lot, the lot is eight thousand six hundred twenty-five square feet with a standard yard. Variance index number twenty twenty-four dash zero zero four, zoning ordinance twenty-two, section four point one five.
So this is an existing legal non-conforming structure? Is that correct?
Dash quarter.
Correct.
Mm-hmm.
So the terrace will be open on three sides. Roofed but open on, on three vertical sides, correct?
Correct. I'm attaching to the non-conforming with a ledger, and we're just coming straight out.
Right, you just want to match the...
I'm Ricardo Casanova, by the way, the general contractor, and these are the owners of the property. So it's basically a cabana, uh, we're proposing on these plans to also build a pool. So it just makes sense to have a cabana right next to our pool.
Any proposed cooking facilities? Inside the cabana?
No.
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 Just outward in space.
My apologies to staff, maybe I, I probably said it, I just missed it, so we're, is it two separate variances?
That's what it seems.
Yes, okay.
So you'll see, you'll see in, in, uh, that part of your binders, uh, two variance applications. I put blue tabs for a quick reference. First one is the memo with the application for the terrace. And the second one is the, the second memo and applications for the bathroom. The set of plans is for both items.
It would be a cabana bath in the non-conforming structure.
Um, any existing or proposed landscaping on that, uh, north side?
On, well, yeah, well definitely.
Eventually, yes. Right now it's just a hedge that goes along the property line, but eventually, yes.
We can provide a landscaping plan if needed.
If, if I may, a couple of things. Staff is not, we're, remaining silence is a non-conforming use, it's strictly up to the board. Uh, there are three components, the first one is the covered terrace. The second one is our code does not allow on detached structures for a, either a kitchen or a bathroom. That's why the second variance is there. And just, just for the record, when the pool comes in, the pool as, as it's depicted now does not comply with setbacks either, it requires ten feet on the side and the plan shows less. So that will be something that down the road you're going to have to address as well.
Any other questions or comments?
I'm glad you pointed that out because, um, what is the setback that the pool would need on the side facing sixty-second avenue?
It, off a side street, it's ten feet, ma'am.
Ten feet?
Yes, ma'am.
And right now they're proposing?
It doesn't have a graphic dimension on it, but graphically, it seems to be around, right around seven feet.
Okay. Well, I would, I would, uh, comment, I would suggest that since this is empty back here, technically, all the, the only thing you have here is the existing structure, you're adding the terrace and you're adding the, the pool eventually and the pool deck. I would recommend that the pool and its pool deck would meet the requirements on the, um, sixty-second avenue side. And I don't have a problem with the, with the, um, variance for the bathroom and the variance to continue the line of the, of the existing structure for the, um, for the covered area. But I do have a problem when you, you know, you're starting to add more things and, uh, maybe something, maybe the terrace can be pushed back a little bit, something could be moved around um, so that the pool and its, and its, uh, deck meet the setbacks, both the rear and the side facing the street.
We can make the pool work with this, with the required setbacks. We will adjust the plans accordingly.
Currently it's not up for review, so I don't think we should...
Right.
Right. This is just initial.
Right, but we can make that a recommendation or, to the...
I think our recommendations would be based off whatever items we're, we're currently considering. I don't think we can make a limitation on future applications. I have to defer to our city attorney, but that's my understanding.
Well, uh, this is not in the, uh, docket right now, I mean, the, we're talking about a future, uh, pool that is not, uh, at your discretion at this point. This is a self-created hardship that you, you should consider. And pursuant to statutes, it's, this is something, uh, this is the reason that it comes to you. Whether or not it's, uh, conforming with the rest of the community, it's, again, it's up to you to decide. But it's not, uh, conforming at this point.
I'll be honest, my, my opinion is the, the rear structure, you're maintaining the existing nonconformity. It's already legal, I have no real issue with that terrace. Um, the only thing that gives me heartburn is the fact that I'm being told that our city does not allow bathroom fixtures inside of detached structures. Anybody else have any other questions or comments?
Yeah, I think the bathroom, that the city doesn't allow us because they're worried we might want to rent that space out or something like that in the future, it's not going to happen. These are, these are the owners, they're going to be here for a while, forever, and I get it, we can't foresee the future. But it is for the pool, it's a cabana bath, you know what I mean?
The structure right now is, uh, washer dryer.
Yeah, the sole purpose of the bathroom would be just for a pool, I mean, we have two young girls and obviously have friends over who want to come over inside of the house, so they use the pool to shop and change.
I completely understand that.
From a staff point of view, the only issue that I have, and I understand, I think I understand the attempt that was made at now, at not allowing kitchens and bathrooms. The only suggestion that I could perhaps give is that we make a contingent that this could only be used as part of the single-family home and it can never be, uh, an efficiency or it can never be rented out. And it, that's, and that's the whole intent really of trying to avoid the bathrooms and the kitchens is to ensure that this doesn't become a, uh, an efficiency.
Because that would be a violation of the city code anyway.
I was saying, yeah, that's a violation of the city code anyway, yeah. Any appetite to put the door to the bathroom facing the outside?
No.
No.
No, it's interior.
I think it's going to be a very nice area with a pool. There's no other comments or questions, I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the requested variances, um, for the bathroom in the pool cabana and for the extension of the, of the proposed terrace. I would, if, if I may, I would like to say, to, to add a recommendation that no further, um, variances are requested for the exterior, um, entertainment area.
A second, hold on.
Okay. Can we get a roll call?
Okay, so I'm going to take a roll call since it's two separate items, the first one for the covered terrace only.
Okay, just to confirm, your intent was to do both?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, go ahead and do two separate roll calls.
Okay, so for the covered terrace, board member Lauredo Harivo?
Yes.
Board member Gonzalez?
Yes.
Board member Rio?
Yes.
And chairman Ceballos?
Yes.
Okay, item passes four zero. And for the bathroom addition, Board Member Gonzalez Arivo? Board Member Gonzalez, how do you vote?
Gonzalez.
Yeah.
For the bathroom? Okay, Board Member Lauredo?
Yes.
Board Member Rio?
Yes.
And Chairman Ceballos?
Not that it matters, but yes.
Item passes four zero.
Good evening, thank you, Ms.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other items? Nope?
Go to the order? And adjourn.
Anyone? For the good old order? No comments, no questions? All right. Motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
All right.
All right.
Have a good night, everyone.
Noting that the next meeting will be the twenty-fourth, and having surgery in my knee the twenty-first. Juan Blanes, no, Commissioner Juan Blanes told me he will bring me here, he will carry me here, so...
The next meeting on, in March or in April?
March twenty-seven.
Okay.
My surgery is the twenty-first. So...
What happened, sir?
Knee replacement.
That one's a, that one's a...